Good. Okay.
Thank you.
Um. A motion to open the budget here, a budget meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
We have a quorum, we're at the uh Village Courthouse and um.
I'm there.
We're the first of a series of budget hearings. Um, Mayor Murphy cannot make it today, but uh. We'll be here for the rest of them. I think we have what? This is a person five or possibly six, or the person six, possibly seven, which is.
Whatever else, the first one.
And if April seventeen happens or not.
Right, okay. So um, people are coming to present their proposals to the budget and their 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 desires. And we begin with our, I guess I call a meeting order, and um, we're um.
We think.
With the uh, with with the presence of uh Christie Derico and Dan Gallagher are uh village justices uh who will make a presentation on uh. On their budget, so.
Are we ready?
It's all yours.
Okay, good evening. My name is Christie Derico. I've been in this position for since two thousand twelve. I've presented to the Budget Committee every year, and I'm going to run through the presentation that you've each gotten a copy of. We are going to alternate this up and judge Gallagher to go through these slides. If you have questions, let us know. The Village of Merritt Justice Justice Court provides comprehensive court and related administrative services as follows. Civil and criminal court matters, small claims, vehicle traffic, parking, fines and penalties, financial reconciliation and reporting. Networking with state, county, and local agencies, there is law enforcement, justice courts, probation, DMV. Office of Court Administration District Attorney Office. And administration and reconciliation of external criminal corrected services. Um. During COVID nineteen, which was a huge, had a huge impact on the court. Um, we had closures from March twenty twenty to May twenty twenty one. But our offices were closed to the public for in-person appearances. But we continued to conduct business virtually, and I don't think, you might have missed a couple of court sessions, but we were running almost from the very beginning. Uh, we reopened in March twenty twenty one. Uh, with the lifting of some pandemic restrictions, the court opened full operations in August twenty twenty one. Uh, we were a little bit behind other agencies, and we were subject to OCA uh directives, which differed from other municipal uh court agents. So, there have been some ups and downs with the court. Um, volumes during these closures that have nothing to do with uh how we operate things. We are just responsive to the cases that we get. But to bring you up to speed for this year, our Tuesday calendars, we have approximately seventy-five to a hundred cases, which consist of traffic violations, land management. Civil matters, code violations, and um although we've put seventy-five to a hundred, I have had as many as two hundred cases on. That was due to an error, but I didn't handle them all. And the changes in the law have now required that where someone fails to appear. We used to have a more expedited process where we could stop someone from failing to appear. Now we have to have several documented failures to appear before we can actually stop someone, so that just can add to our calendar. Thursday calendar is our criminal calendar, and we have been having anywhere from sixty to ninety cases. And that would bring us back to pre-pandemic levels. And again, myself has had as many as almost a hundred cases in the past few weeks. So we definitely are back to um business as it used to be.
And for the benefit of Ms. Yazair, we, all all criminal matters that uh.
You have to speak into Mike.
Oh, sorry. Just for your benefit, since uh you're a new trustee. Um, all criminal matters that arise from events that happen in the village actually come to our court. They don't go up, you know, the county, they don't go to the town, they come to us first. And uh, so uh, we're basically the uh, the court of initial jurisdiction for all criminal matters in the village.
Um, we do two evenings per year, uh, one in May, one in October, where we handle traffic and small claims. There are hearings and trial that are conducted outside of these scheduled uh dates. And obviously, the judges preside, judges and staff preside over after our arraignment speech. For evening or weekend, we also stand and choose a family court. The mayor clothes, we take certain uh proceedings that are filings, and then they go to the other, the next day they are open. Uh, just bring this up.
Yeah. So just by way of background, uh, our, we've staffed and have worked with the staff of uh four full-time employees over the, at least the past twenty-five years. And um, I've been with the court for fifteen years, and uh, we find that uh. We have a very, very good staff right now. We have four full positions that are filled, and everybody's working together, and we're functioning with the. Great efficiency. Um, just by way of uh background as well. Uh, during the uh, the pandemic, we were forced to be creative on how to deal with things that were coming into our court to prevent backlog and the like. Because we were allowed to have people actually come into court. So we were uh probably the first court in Westchester that implemented a statewide approved program for pleas by mail. We had to get the process approved by the OCA, and we immediately started doing that with the assistance of our uh, our village prosecutor at the time. And so we're literally doing, you know, as many as fifty to a hundred uh of these plead by mail on a regular basis. Uh, which prevents people from having to come in, it reduces the crowds and the traffic in our court on Tuesdays. Uh, which was a benefit particularly during COVID, but it also means that fewer people having to wait uh lengthy periods of time to get their uh. Their their requests and rest. Um, also, we're very proud to say that over the years, we have uh sought out funding opportunities from the OCA of support administration. And uh, with uh our court clerk Alita Lousi's help, we recently got a new eleven thousand dollar uh. Lots of grant uh that we are going to use for the equipment purchases and the like. And uh, that is on top of all the computers over time that we have actually gotten uh from the OCA. We ask for them, we get grants. So right now, all the computers, I think we have at least uh nine or ten computers, both uh desktops and laptops. Those are all provided by the state and no cost to the village. So we're very, very much attuned to try and keep the our costs down. And among other things, the grants paid for the days that you're sitting at, uh, paid for the carpeting on the floor and the seating within the courtroom. So that was, and and the uh fifth ball, the ticketing window there, that was built out with uh, with uh funds that we applied for uh to the shakeout program. And uh, we will continue to do that. So what do we want to do going forward? Want to keep doing what we do well? And one thing is training our staff. So we have four full-time people. We have made every effort we can to cross-train them so that they can cover each other in the event that somebody's on vacation, sick leave, or whatever. There have been times that uh around COVID that we were actually down to uh one or two people uh due to sickness or because people uh left or retired. And so we found it was very, very helpful to have people there to stand in for their colleagues. And everybody uh is uh, it's a very, very positive vibe with our group. They all stand in to help each other. Um, we're going to continue to apply for our J cap grants. Uh, we're going to seek a different plea by mail, working with our village prosecutor. And one big deal we have this year, which we haven't done for a few years, uh, is we have to do documents destruction. We've got an overwhelming number of documents that are stored up on the attic, uh, which is our primary space. It's secure, it's locked. But uh, we're overflowing, and we have to have our staff inventory everything, work with OCA, because we have very strict retention requirements. You know, for example, criminal cases are closed, we have to hold them for forty years before we can destroy them. So that's going to be a big deal that we're going to look into doing, and staff is preparing to do this spring. As I said, I want them to do it now, right in the middle of summer, when the attic gets up to a hundred and fifty degrees.
Question, um, when when, I mean, usually this is first appearance here for criminal matters, right? And then we send it up.
Well, no, no.
No?
We, everybody, all cases come to us.
Yes.
They stay with us except for felonies. There, there's a disposition beforehand, uh, it stays with us, or it goes up to the uh county. Uh, and if it stays a felony in a county, it just resolves up there, but frequently it gets reduced by the prosecution sends it back here.
Got it.
So if it stays in the felony, we don't uh see it through, but every case starts here, and we may have felony hearings, we have bail applications, so yeah.
So you gotta hang on to the records.
We absolutely do.
And do you, are the, because I toured.
Yes.
I, I'm so sorry, I'm forgetting. Um, I toured the um, so the attic with Christine and Judge Derico, it's like apology. Um. And I can't remember the the files in like uh fire safe um uh containers.
Uh, I don't think they're in, I think they're in cardboard boxes. They are behind a screened locked area.
Yeah.
Um, I'd have to leave it to the fire department to tell us what the statuses of uh, you know, the the fire conditions up there. But no, they are, you know, they are just in uh cardboard boxes as you might normally see records stored.
So if some, I forget, if something happens, what do we do?
Uh, well, I hate to imagine a fire over the attic, but anyway, uh, you know, I guess these things happen, but um.
Well, there is some redundancy, certain aspects in the file you have in different places. There's a police department portion, there's something maintained by the district attorney office. There's also something of a computer trail.
Okay.
Microfishing is a whole other conversation, something we talked about, looked into, but it's not something for the budget committee today.
No, I just wanted to know like it in terms of like, do you have um anything that is uh stored electronically and.
And also, don't forget, we have a sports stenographer that records what happens in court. And the only thing I'll add about felonies, we can keep it for months up to a year before it goes up to count. They have to sign and wave up there. So if that doesn't happen, it's kicking around our court, and if it's reduced, it comes back. But I just wanted to.
Is there ever a point where you send send in the paperwork and you're done with it? No? Okay.
They give their own file.
Got it.
And one other thing, uh, we have a courtroom program, and after every court session, our staff sits down and inputs information about what transpired. Durmance dates, uh, dispositions, uh, all the details of what happened. If it's a, let's say it's a DWI, the person uh is given probation for three years and a fine. Uh, and other things, that gets included into the software. So there is a redundancy as as those, you know, suggested.
Cool.
Can I continue?
Go ahead, please, thank you.
So um, a couple of things, uh, we're on page six of the uh, the handout. What I think that this is a breakdown of our court revenues and court expenses over time. And what I think, I think it's important to see here is that our court expenses uh from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-two have remained remarkably stable. Uh, if you take a look at what they were back in two thousand sixteen and seventeen, if you would even without adjusting for inflation, uh, two thousand twenty-two was not a whole lot different. And we are doing with the same level of staffing as we have for, you know, for the entire time I've been here. So I think we're really in efficient operation. Uh, also to note that our court revenues have always exceeded our court expenses. So we're essentially self-funding. Um, and I will say that having looked at some of the other communities around us, that is not always the case. Some of them are operating at significant deficits. So we're proud of our efficiency, we're proud of our staff, and I think a lot of that is reflected here in these numbers. Um, and uh, as we typically point out, uh, you know, our court is one of thirty-three courts in Westchester. Uh, we are uh, as of the last time, the near controller uh assessed the various revenues that are confused in uh, in the Westchester County. We're the thirty, uh, we're the sixth, fifth busiest court, uh, fifth out of thirty-three in county. And we're twenty-seven out of the twelve-hundred courts in this, in the entire state. So we're a busy court. And um, and uh, we're proud of the service that we provide, that we really do. Um, I guess lastly, on on page eight, just a summary of uh of our staffing. Uh, we uh, we currently have a, we have a court clerk, two court clerks. Bonnie Pastorella is our chief clerk. And we don't, our second in command, and we have an assistant court clerk, Martha Chavez, and court cashier, who just started at Keem Jones Van Hook. Uh, we also have uh, uh, a part-time uh court clerk. And uh, we have uh several court constables that rotate. So they come in on court days, they uh check people when they're coming in, um, you know, make sure they're not carrying any metal. We have a detective that checks for metal, and they're watching the jury. And one of the things, one reason that we did this year ago was we found that the officers that were coming into court to supervise us or keep an eye on us. They frequently got called away for other things to do. Uh, we find that these court constables um are, you know, are essential to safety of everybody in our courtroom. They're they're retired police, they are licensed to carry. Um, and we think that that also is a benefit because they're relatively low-cost um uh amenity to us compared to having uh two or three full-time court uh lease officers here to keep an eye on us.
Other courts hire officers from the county. Um, they do that like moonlighting, it's shit sanctioned, but these officers being retired, it's been more cost effective.
And also, since we we're on during the day, we can't access those county officers because they're working at the county courts. So we've, we've got a good crew of uh three or four of them, they they don't, they they rotate out, we don't have them all here at the same time, but they're very dependable and they're very professional.
Um.
Was it, is it three or four?
We have, we have, I think we might have four, but it doesn't matter, there's never more than two on on a given day. They just rotate out depending upon what their arrears and their needs are. Um, I'd like to just, uh, if you don't have any other questions at this point, I'd just like to take a look at the preliminary bulletin uh that you received. Uh, and I'd like to thank everybody uh for spending the time on preparing this. Uh, we've had very few requests uh that we uh, we sent in, uh, basically adding some time uh and money for our uh. Stenographer and interpreter, because we found that we were going over in that area. It's a, you know, a couple of two thousand dollars, I think. Um, otherwise, the changes that we made uh, or we asked for were accommodated. There's one clarification that needs to be made um, under the uh personnel, permanent regular personnel. We have uh court clerk Bonnie Castarella, court clerk uh Loci, assistant court clerk Martha uh Martha Chavez. And then there's a, I think there's an error, you have assistant court clerk G. Bianco and cashier. We don't have a G. Bianco.
No, it's it's a Keem Jones uh Van Hook now, and that should be fifty-six thousand.
Very good. We just wanted to make sure that uh it looked like there was a mistake because we could.
Where the cashier is supposed to be?
Uh, number eighty.
I don't even have a name in there.
Assistant.
I'm looking at a different. Okay.
So, and Keem.
Okay.
And it's, and it's what, fifty, you said fifty-six?
Let me see there.
Yep.
So yes, and Keem started with us a few weeks ago. He actually worked for us many years ago. And he came in and it's really wonderfully smooth transition. He's a, he's a great asset to us. Um, but otherwise, we didn't have anything to to add. We, we did ask for a um, a uh, a small increase in our own compensation. Uh, the fifteen years I've been here, we've never asked for a uh, a pay increase. Uh, we think it's uh, I think it's a fair request, certainly given comparables around other communities in terms of uh. What town and village does get paid, we like that, we'd have to do, uh, consider that as you go forward and finalize the budget.
Where where is that in the budget? I don't.
Yeah, I don't see that.
Say one or four.
Hmm? One or four.
One of four.
Or one or four.
One of four, but where it doesn't say um.
It's it's where it says, you know, the, this, the part-time salaries.
Also, where it says overtime?
Um, no, um.
There is.
It's a eleven-ten, zero-one-two-zero.
I don't think there's an.
I don't even, it doesn't indicate.
No.
Do you see a number?
No, you.
No, but we, you know, we have a budget.
What?
Page seventy-one.
Page seventy-one, yeah, I have it here, and I don't see an increase though. It's uh.
Don't, also, we don't have last year's number.
It's dramatic.
Okay, so you're on a different page.
No, no.
I don't give the printout, so mine's page one thirty-one, but it's.
Even there.
And the increase you're requesting is what?
We asked for a seven percent payers. Don't ask me the number, require me, but we're doing our total.
You're not even looking at the right one.
No, it's just the one.
The range.
That's the page I'll give you just for us.
It's twenty-nine hundred. So I think the total. We have before the year.
So it's not the overtime, this is a different line that I'm just not seeing.
It's here.
Okay, yeah, I, okay.
It's, it's not. It's not in here, but it it, they're requesting a seven percent.
I get it. I get that they're requesting.
So it's not.
We don't, we don't see, there, there are no updated salaries in this budget, it's the salary from this coming year. So a request wouldn't have been in this.
Typically, the only, you don't show the salary increases for the uh employees who are subject to attractive bargaining agreement. Uh, you know, the the judges would be considered among the non-union staff. Uh, and would be covered separately, uh, if you want the board to consider salary increases.
There.
And what, what is um? The um, I guess, I don't want to sit there and say line sixty-five, because it might not be the same, but it says longevity under B. Castrella. And Bonnie, what is that?
Negotiated.
Uh, increase.
Well, once an employee has worked for a certain number of years, uh, they are, they will get a one revenue payment.
Oh.
For their salaries. I think Bonnie's been here for one hundred and thirty years.
Yeah, all over that.
Over ten years, so I think that's where the kitchen is, the ten years, the increase.
Cool.
Fifteen or twenty.
Got it.
Very, very nice, yeah. So the only other thing I'd like to add, um. You know, our revenue is based upon what comes through these doors, and we do not have control over that. I found uh when Chief DeRusa came on, I looked at old budgets, and the police used to give their numbers on things like calls received. Uh, the moving violations, parking violations, they had a breakdown, let's say, ten years ago. So um, I asked uh why these weren't reported, and Sandra DeRusa intended to report them to the board, and they've been included in her report ever since then. So looking at the numbers, which I'm sure will be part of the presentation here. Uh, for two thousand twenty, the calls received into the Village of Merritt Police were fourteen thousand three twenty-five. Twenty twenty-one, they were at sixteen thousand nine sixty-one, twenty twenty-two, seventeen thousand one twenty-three. The number of arrests for twenty twenty were two hundred and ninety, for twenty twenty-one, they were two hundred and fifteen, and for twenty twenty-two, they were four hundred and sixteen. So you are seeing our numbers that are delayed, they're based upon revenue and money coming in months, if not a year in the past. From a period when there was an entire lockdown, nothing to do with anything, even though we did keep our our business running, you know, the court running as best we could. We have seen in twenty twenty-three an uptick, and based upon seeing these numbers from the chief. I would imagine that for twenty twenty-three, you're going to see this trend increase. Uh, because it's been reflected in the number of cases we've seen just in this calendar year. And um, you know, we roll with it, we uh, if the calendar requires us to be here till four o'clock, and you know, we don't take a lunch break, that's how it is. But I just wanted the board to be aware that looking at, you know, domestic violence incidents, two thousand twenty was just under two hundred. Two thousand twenty-one, it was down to under one sixty, two thousand twenty-two, almost at one ninety. It's definitely trending, for whatever reason, we can't say. Um, but that's something, that's what we have to deal with, and we have to be prepared. We utilize, staffing's remain the same, you can see our numbers, our staff works super hard, and we've told you this before. We have someone who comes in and thinks this is going to be a paper pusher job, they are rudely awakened immediately. At Keem, he started, he has been boots on the ground, tried learning new things. Um, we rotate who sits in the court, so it's uh redundancy, and someone can pop into somebody else's job. It's a really good staff working hard for the village, and um, you know, we want to be prepared to do what we have to do.
Um. Looking at this, and this may be my uh, this may be my, my not understanding what I'm looking at. So I'll take that right away, but I see that they could track under contract services, the uh, the uh. They seem to be, uh, they seem to commit higher than than the budget consistently, and I'm looking at um. Uh, twenty-one, uh, the, the, yes, uh, contract services roughly forty thousand dollars in twenty-one.
There's a good answer to that.
Yeah, yeah.
So uh, that's the, the main background is for the parking citation management system. So when you see the contract services increase.
Yeah.
That means our revenue has increased as well. So it's, it's, that's actually, that's actually the number you want to see go up.
So that, that basically is the fee that's being paid to the processing company, correct?
Correct.
I got it, correct. And and the other thing is, in the um, the comparisons you gave us, and I know it's not, this is not about revenues.
Right.
But I I can't help but notice that the revenues twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen were all seven figures. And now they've dipped, they've dipped down in twenty twenty, and they're, you know, they're, they're uh, they're. They haven't rebounded to that, uh, is there a reason for that?
Well, this goes back to what the chief is going to report on. We take, we can't, we do not generate arrests, we respond to the arrests that take place, a- and the parking and things of that nature. Um, every, the doors were closed in twenty twenty, nobody was writing tickets. So these numbers need to be looked at, you know, in context, we haven't lost our place and standing. So that would mean we're consistent with the decreases in other jurisdictions. But based upon the calls for service, arrests, domestic violence incidents into the police department. Uh, the trend is going to go up, and if you look historically, if we back out twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, and even going into twenty twenty-two, since it takes a case maybe a year, two years to be resolved. You're going to see it up, when we come back next year, these numbers, I I believe, are going to be very similar to what they were for. And uh, urban legend that I can't comment on, but we hear in the halls, when there's contract negotiations, sometimes we hear it affects the numbers we see. I can't, you know, law enforcement and, yeah, but I don't know if that's true, but.
Blue flu thing?
I don't really know how that works, but outside of that, we can say you can see a direct correlation between the.
Okay, got it.
And 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 lastly, I've looked at other local courts around Westchester, they all have plummeted during COVID. Uh, this is, this is a building back uh that we expect and we're all seeing in terms of the busyness of staff in our court and Thursdays as well as in Tuesdays.
Now, um.
Just one other item on the revenues. So uh, courts lag behind in the uh, in the revenue, not not everything you do, but because uh, what happens is, everything gets sent to the state. The state audits everything, and then one or two months later, they send it back to us. So the number that you see in, in the budget right now, it's part of the year-to-date revenue, isn't, it it may say it's through a certain date, but it's realistically through a date one to two months prior.
So it's kind of like the vendor waiting for Amex to pay them for the receipts they've gotten from sales.
Yeah, I said, just the state has to audit, take their cut, and then they send everything back to us.
Hey.
All right, okay, I I I think, I think we're good now, the um, uh, is there anything that you've noticed in our, in our fee or 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 fine schedules that um? That we're we're not. We're not, uh, we haven't come up with a, with a stern enough fine, uh, or uh. Or or um, you know, is is there anything that you've noticed? In cases that come before you, or or are they too high, too low?
I I haven't noticed, but I will, I will tell you that it uh, we are basically prohibited from getting involved in discussions of whether a fine should be higher or lower. Uh, because we can't have it look as though the court is being used.
Understood.
Uh, to maximize revenues or like, I will tell you, and I'm sure I'm speaking for Judge Derico as well. Every case we look at individually, and we decide what is a fair uh fine or penalty. We do not think, you know, you may not like to hear this, but our thoughts are not about what our revenues are going to be at the end of the year. We have to look at things individually, so uh, so there's a, it's a twofold question. No, I haven't noticed anything that seems to be out of whack. On the other hand, we would never be uh, uh, feel ever comfortable with advising you if, that we thought the fee for fine structure should change.
In other communities, they probably have people to my right spearhead some type of report analysis, look at other jurisdictions, and we would have nothing to do with it. And just like the penalties for the parking tickets, which at one point had a zero on the end, how much they were.
Hmm.
I mean, we just processed what we got, then they were. I mean, we just processed what we got, then they were uh revised and maybe put in a more realistic uh. Light of what people could afford, but that was set by the board, and we just um, you know, roll with what the the law is. That's how it works, but if you wanted to have a review, they would take it upon themselves to look at other communities, and then we would be guided accordingly.
Now, um many years ago, when uh I purchased a new car, I uh. I had a uh speeding ticket in the Village of Marineric, and the thing that stuck in my mind was that. I got it, and I said before I pleaded on it, I was gonna, right, there was no fee, there was no fine, the fine wasn't there. And I didn't wanna sign a black check, blank check. So um uh sometimes when you get a a a uh, you know, so people might say, yeah, I'll, I'll just plead this and pay the fine. But if they don't know what the fine is, is there, is there a a way we can do that? Just tell them what the fine is, and 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 they can mail it in, and then it just just short circuits the whole thing?
So years ago, we used to, the officers, when they ticketed somebody, would give them an envelope. And had the fine uh structure.
Remember that, yeah.
He wanted to be guilty. The uh, the O C A um and uh and the administrative judges. They said, you can't do that, that's unethical, people have to have an opportunity to come into the court and talk to the judges if they'd like to. We actually didn't agree with that assessment, because there is a convenience factor, most people don't wanna have to come into court. But we were told that that was not an option. And so you you can, there are public resources that you can go to to see what the fine ranges are. So for every paper that you get, uh whether it's we're not having a a plate light. You know, that's functioning, or that you have uh, uh you know, your subs, your your, you you don't have your inspection up to date. There's a fine range for each one of them, we have a book that goes into detail.
Yeah.
But it can be Googled, but uh you know, when somebody comes in to court and says, you know, we we, you know. We we, you know, the the the, an offer is made for them to have a reduction, we take a look at what the fine uh range is, and we decide what is the appropriate final. But no, we can't do what you suggested, it was done in the past, it's not done anymore.
I see.
And and the state sets the fines for movie managers. Uh the village can set fines for the uh parking and code, but I think code violation is probably the smallest. What you're doing in terms of fines. Uh but with the handheld ticket riders, as soon as they, the P E O identifies the violation, it auto-populates.
Because that's just a part of, that's a violation, it's not.
A violation of the local ordinance.
It just automatically pops up.
Alright, um. Yeah, I wish, I wish people could just hear, if you if you made a mistake and you and you got a ticket, you could say, alright, I got a ticket, it's a two hundred dollar mistake. I'm sorry, I'll write the check, and you know, I'd be I'd be done with it, and it saves everybody a lot of trouble, but if you're not sure what the fine is.
Well, one, one way, one way, I'm gonna be worked uh to attempt to address something along lines of what you're saying, is the plea by mail. So uh, the village prosecutor will decide which tickets are appropriate to offer somebody the opportunity to plead by mail. But that will not have a fines in it, but it can save them a trip into the court. Again, the fines are always set by the judges, they can't be preset, you can't say, if you plead guilty to this reduced charge, your fine will be X. You have to plead guilty, and then judge will later set it, but you can do it and avoid coming into court through the plea by mail process.
Yeah. And and if you come into court and you plead guilty, you still don't, it's up to the judge to set the fine, so it's the same process. It's not as if you plead guilty before you know what your fine's gonna be.
Correct.
Yeah, I I mean, we, do you remember when I came in?
It's burned in my memory. Did I throw the book at you?
No, you didn't, you were very nice.
Two adjustments have to be made.
Yes.
That we discussed earlier. So earlier this year, Alita Loki was approved for tuition reimbursement. In our union contract, I believe, they're also available to the employees that are not represented by union contract. If they have um coursework that they pay for, um that um is. Pertinent or useful in their department, they would get tuition reimbursement. So I approved Alita for tuition reimbursement, which um is capped at fifteen hundred and seventy-five dollars per semester. Just the way it's negotiated in the contract. So um she already has one disbursement of fifteen seventy-five. And I believe that she's continuing, although I don't know, to go to school, to law school. So um we would probably have to add here uh in contact services. Three thousand one hundred fifty dollars.
Sorry.
Okay, um the second adjustment that I wanna talk about is, earlier today, we met about revenue. And while I think that the the judges, uh the the revenue here um for twenty twenty-three actual are gonna come in around six hundred and fifty thousand. Um we need to make an adjustment to the tentative that we forecast, which is eight hundred. We me, we need to bring that down to six hundred and fifty thousand, or maybe seven hundred. As the judges have explained, things are ticking up, so we need to make that adjustment.
Wait a minute, so so things are ticking up, but the revenues are coming down?
On the eight hundred that we anticipate, you see the eight hundred repeated year after year after year.
I don't know. Still seventy-three? No, no, no.
Oh, page one of one.
Is this where it says the fines and fort- fortitures?
So, so um you can see twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three adopted, twenty-three adjusted. Going over the top, they're over, you know, the top header, twenty-three actual right now, so it's. It's five hundred thousand right now, that's only booked until probably what, or? January, February, so we're probably gonna come in around six hundred and fifty, maybe even a little more this year, in total revenue. So what we should do is shade the tentative anticipated revenue by a hundred thousand, and bring that number to uh seven hundred thousand instead of eight hundred thousand. That'll be an adjustment on our overall budget at the end, when things kind of wash wash out, but we should do that because um.
There's the trends.
It trends, th- things are supposed to get better, so we just have to, and then maybe next year, we can go back to the eight hundred.
I agree.
Yeah, and there, yeah, and you, we have, we talked about.
Reimbursement.
Yeah.
Does it, is it the cap to matter whether it's graduate school or college? Is it just always gonna be that fifteen hundred dollar cap?
Unless it's negotiated in the C S E A contract in the future. It's that right now, and I think it's been that with many, many, many contracts.
Okay.
So that's why it looks kind of ridiculously low.
Go ahead.
Well, every little bit does.
Yeah, they do.
Great. Thank you for your work. Any other questions?
Uh no, I I.
Yeah, I mean.
On the, on the um, on the salary increase, I would, I would compare that.
Thank you.
You're not paid enough, I mean, but 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 none of our elected officials are paid enough. And 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 I would, it's my preference to do all the elected officials at the same time. So um uh uh that's, that's, and I don't think this is probably the best time to do that. That's my feeling only, okay.
We made the request, and we'd just like you to consider.
Thank you, thank you, we will, but I'll acquiesce, I'm I'm I'll I'll stipulate that. Nobody here, uh none of the elected officials here are uh good, good enough, so there we go.
You said are not good enough?
Or or no, or don't, don't, aren't paid enough.
That was like, speak for yourself.
But that's, that's my, just my feeling, no, I'm only one more. Alright.
Thank you.
Appreciate your hard work. You remember, Judge, uh it was a speeding ticket that was, that was switched out through a seatbelt violation. And then, and then uh I I I sent the thing in. Uh and somehow it got lost in my license. And I found out about that a year later, and and I remember you saying to the, to the, to the officer, I think Mr. Young has suffered enough, don't you?
My goodness.
You don't have a lot of tools to make people come into court.
Yeah.
You don't show up, uh ticket, you get suspended. If you get pulled over in the future, suspended license, it's a misdemeanor charge. So it's called a five eleven, and so it shouldn't be taken lightly.
No, no.
I have a friend that that happened to, and it was because he had the same first, last name and middle initial as somebody else, and it was, and it wasn't, it it wa, it wasn't him. But it was New Year's Eve.
Get a, something in the mail that says your license incident, you only find out when you, when you've done something else wrong. Yeah, yeah. What? So I remember. Oh, uh. Seven years ago? Eight?
Literally.
Yeah, I don't know.
Like, you know, you 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 plead a strong.
Well, it was, it it was uh when I got put over. New Michelle, this is Mr. Young, I'm gonna have to take you in, I'm like. Call the office and family, I need, I need to make bail.
In uh, in P A, they may spend in the fine, whether you're guilty or not, and then if you wanna fight it, they already have your money. It's a pretty good system. That's my Villanova speeding tickets.
Okay, so, alright, what's, what's next now?
Uh expenses and revenues for um one prestige. So we can be ready, ready. For what comes our way. So, so our department heads earlier today were pressed to uh make sure that they're sharp on their revenues. When they are. Before the board of trustees, and they were.
Okay.
We're gonna be talking about the revenue.
Um you hadn't spoken to the mic, Jerry, so repeat your whole meal again.
But earlier today, we met about the um revenue and expenses. And I'm uh at three thirty, and like, like, just like I, I pointed out, what we should reduce the anticipated revenue from the court. Because um it's forecasted uh highs, uh all of the other department heads are gonna be looking at their revenue lines. The ones that they've added to us, um that added to our um. To the budgets, uh the big ones. P P W, recreation, the the kinds of uh departments, and they'll be ready to present and defend. Their revenues at the time when they come before the board.
Alright.
We discussed briefly sales tax, and in front of you are um. We will budget memos, budget committee memos. Where a sales pack has been a concern year after year after year. Yet we have.
Oh.
How did you put it, I was. Wanted to show, what show was that, uh not only. The past, we've exceeded uh projected sales tax, so sure, if much of a real cloud sales tax. Um, there you go, yeah, so. And even for this year, um the the adopted number is four million, four hundred thousand dollars. Uh we have received two of the core payments that far, and we are at two point six million dollars. And I I don't need to be a C P A to know that two point six million times two is five point two million.
Yeah.
So, so um there may be, uh and when the manager's office or the foretreacher's office uh. Is, or the building department, we're looking at the revenues that we're projecting, we'll be ready at that time to provide those uh. Backup information for those projections. Okay, the other thing was, uh there was a question about um the review to make sure that we're on top of the budget, right? Uh Victor to four, really encouraged that to provide reports. That we provide now to you guys all the time. It was Victor pushing, pushing, and pushing that, and it was an excellent idea, when we first brought it up, when I first bought here, I said. It sounds reasonable, why don't we do it? And we started doing it, we've implemented it, and we've been doing it ever, ever since. But this year and last year, um staff, mostly me, um have been bringing in department heads to do mid-year reviews. Okay, we did mid-year, we talked about that here at the board level, we had some adjustments that we had to make. But I looked at every department, I looked at their revenue, six months, I mean, the six-month mark, I'm doing that review. And everybody was in target, and we're still doing, and we did, I did another one before I presented the budget. We're still on target, we're doing really well as far as our projections. Now, there are a couple of things in expenses that we've added, right? There's an additional fifty thousand dollars that we're adding in parking. Parking sticker, parking fees for commercial vehicles. There's um a significant increase in um some of the stuff that we're, we're involved in. Um there there's an increase in other items that, when it comes up, because that's why we provided you the revenue for. The court has only one revenue item, that's fines and forfeitures. But when we give you the expense for their anticipated operating budget, which is their expense side, and their revenue side. The court only has one, but we have many others. We bring in, let's give, I'll give you an example for sidewalk and parking spot cafes. Last year, I put a projected number in there of thirty thousand dollars, we exceeded that number, okay?
We exceeded because of the amount of people who were requesting?
Right, and the time, the length of time, this year, I'm already at twenty-six thousand dollars. So I increased that number to fifty thousand dollars, because I know that they have been extremely successful. I know there's gonna be a lot of them, and the reason for the increase from the thirty to the fifty is not that we increased the price. Cause we kept the price exactly the same. The length of time now, a lot of them were asking us to set up the parking spot cafes in May and in June. Roasters is getting set up Friday, that's a whole month of April. Barquilla is getting set up mid-April. So there's a lot of activity from some of the um initiatives that we put forward. That we kinda, you know, there was some growing pains, the be, the first year of the parking spot cafes, we looked like the Shanty Town. But they had all these different shacks all over the place, I prohibited that, they can put up umbrellas, the umbrellas are really nice, they look like they're buying them from big box stores. And the tables are out there, you guys saw it last year, and many of you use it, you know, all the time.
And then there's been a a program with Girl Scouts and others to do flowers, so that makes it a little more consistent.
On the, on the actual barricades, on the P P W. They don't charge, but we charge. Right, but we, they bring in those barricades, they set them up, and then they take them away. So there's a lot of revenue items um that have increased based on our experience, but also based on the fact that. We really do um obsess about what number we're gonna be putting in here. And then you wanna talk about the sewer thing that you wanna talk about? Okay, you're right. So then, so then, you know, what we're also doing is, is the sewer project, as. As Bob was able, and I can't really say, but Bob spoke to you about the sewer project, and that we're at the end. Of a very long, arduous, unfortunately late, but we get there, we got there, sewer project. That has been significantly modified, it's not over, working on phase two now, okay? So it's still gonna be around for a couple of years, but. As we continue to fix, repair, and pay for those repairs uh of the sewer system. We have, we sort, we have staff that takes, takes a lot of time and a lot of energy to do that. But then that staff will go away, that staff won't be working on that, they'll be working on other things that are not necessarily emphasized upon by it, okay? I don't charge. A joint waterworks for my time, Dan's time, Laura, or me, because we don't do any of that. Unbuilt there has probably, that's it. But sewer, we don't have a waterwork, we don't have a sewer works that does the work for us, we have to do that work. And that was the justification for the sewer fee and the fact that. Someone has to pay for our time, and it shouldn't be, it should be sewer rent users, not regular. Someone has to pay for our time, and it shouldn't be, it should be sewer rent users, not regular. Resident.
And and you're you're comfortable that these um these non uh. Non-tax revenues are um. Not overestimated.
No, I'm comfortable that they are either on target or conservative, what I wanted to do though is. Because my obligation to the board is to provide a tentative budget by the twentieth of of March. Now it's your budget. Now you guys can, okay, you guys can ask us to tweak it, you guys can, I can recommend what I recommended tonight, because we kinda had a little. Yeah, there was just a couple of numbers off, right, and Laura just gave me the number for Akeem and. I nobody, and the judges knew about the the Alita getting tuition reimbursement. So that's what this process is for. The department head comes in, we do our tweaks, then we move on. And Ogie and Laura keep that collective, I guess, decision-making. Updated as we bring you the final budget to uh, what's the date? So that's really what this process is about. If you have, and I'd really like to. Bring this at the department level, because not only do I have parents department heads like these two guys, but. I have inexperienced departments, I want them to have the experience of. Being questioned by the board. It really is valuable, really is an application. Yeah, you need them to have it, we need them to have it. So if you have questions about recreation fees. Talk about it. Building department, which will be Monday. So that's the time to do it. Hopefully, I can answer all those questions, but I want my department to answer those questions.
Now, the um uh we, it was a little. I didn't wanna bring it up all the judges were here, because it was a specific case, a little chit chat over um. Uh over tree tree violation fines. Yeah, so um that that that, but that's a pretty sharp, there was a pretty sharp reduction there.
It it was, it was, but.
Are the fees too high, or 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 are the fines too high, or or are they?
We set the fees, you guys voted on them, I don't know, not. It was voted on, and and those were, you know, I mean. The iterations and and time that we spent on the tree law. It works. People are putting in their twenty-five dollar application fee. And all it takes is a twenty-five dollar application fee. If if someone wants to take down four trees and does it illegally, they're gonna get fined seventeen thousand five hundred dollars.
He said seventeen thousand or seventeen hundred?
Right? The tree committee was extremely, extremely insisted that we do big fines to disinsentivize. The industry, that was part of it. But but we reduced the application fee, twenty-five dollars, which is fair. And I go out there and I say, well. Or they hire an arborist for three, four hundred dollars, and they get your justification. It's it's a simple process that people just have to either know about or care about.
And the reduction, the seventeen five was reduced to what?
Five thousand.
Five thousand, alright, so that that that's. Yeah.
But that's not, I don't come here and say, that's not. That's their job, my job is to do what I do, their job is to do a thing.
So the the question is, is it too high, or was it not high enough that uh i- is five thousand enough for that? That that let me ask you the village manager, uh how you feel about somebody who cut down those trees and got fined five thousand dollars, was that enough?
Cut down trees that were worth at least five thousand dollars each, imagine.
Okay.
So maybe making it a little bit higher with, because if it the tree costs five. Well, then they have like, they're fine and on top of, okay.
I think our fines are fine.
Okay.
Thanks to Nora, I was involved in in helping with the tree law, which is not, you know. But I think our fines are fine, uh I think people need to know what our fines are.
Yeah.
Be scared about our fines.
Well, I'm so, my my question is, is five thousand dollars scary enough for three trees? Because I know I know what I call, I I had trees, I cut them down, I know they're not cheap to cut down. So so if if five grand is just the cost of doing business, it's well, I'm gonna cut down the trees, it's gonna, I have to pay the arborists as much, and I'll have to. Uh I'll have to pay, you know, five grand to the to the village, you know.
Possibly that. It's all about the education, if people are, if people wanna cut down a tree, they should inquire. Am I gonna be fined, am I gonna, you know, or is this, am I able to?
I think. That a lot of people know, I think some people still don't know, and we've done, we've tried, I mean, the tree committee has worked hard to try and. Get it out in neighborhood newsletters, like Neighborhood Association letters, um. We put information out in the Village Newsletter, maybe we, you know.
Rerotation, so so what's happening now is not only do the people know. The tree, the tree service company says, I'm not touching that tree until you put an application.
Yeah.
They don't wanna, they don't wanna have trouble with me either, because they're listed on the application.
But this particular. Was it, it was a house that changed hands. And sometimes that's where things.
And and that, and apparently this tree.
New homeowners.
Removal service was from another community, doesn't work in this community.
They know now.
Acquainted from where they used to live, and it's one of those things.
And now they know.
So the judge, the judge who involved, I don't know which one uh knows all the details, and I don't wanna.
Can I ask a procedural question, and I guess this would have been maybe a judge question, so does the village prosecutor get involved with this?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, as as they knew most of these.
I just, I just, that was just a question.
But then there's also a distinction in fines, the way we do things, so for instance, if someone. If we discover during an inspection for a rear deck that someone um put in the new bathroom. And that permit fee should have been uh, you know, four or five hundred dollars. Our current, our current code says we just double the fee, and they pay a thousand dollars and they're done, they don't come before. So it's like a, just like a fine, that we issue them, in order for them to get to see the the com- the certificate of compliance. They have to pay it, or else they're not gonna get it, right? So this year, we've added in the fee schedule, an additional thousand dollars on top of that, so it's that double plus a thousand dollars.
But we don't need them to go to court for that, because it's sort of self-policing.
We don't, so that's the, that begs the question, what items do we, do we need people to go to court for or not go to? Right, so it's taking a tree down criminals, that's great, you have to get someone else to know, so.
Not the right person to ask.
Right, so I so I you get that, so so could it be an automatic fine, uh is there? Those are, these are all questions, but well, you know, not for me, I don't.
Okay, so so i- is it potentially possible that we could uh construct it so it, it's not something that goes to court, that they just gotta pay?
I don't know.
Have to ask Bob.
You know, that that uh wanna do, that's something we can do, but that's just fines, I'm talking about revenue, I'm talking about other items. Um I forget what else.
So if we have specific questions, we should save them for the department heads, now, but on the other hand.
We're we're the manager fault, that's when we.
Yeah.
Hit us with everything else.
But it's also, if we have some questions, we could send them in ahead of time, just. Yeah, cuz I have a couple of questions, but.
We can, and and but I really, I really, I wanna, as we, as we talk today, I really want the department heads to have that experience, have the.
Let me ask.
Ability to answer.
Let me ask you this, if 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 the, and again, this could be. My uh my, could be me speaking with a. My ignorant uh uh viewpoint. If if the non-tax revenues come in higher, right? And uh. There's no, like, oh, we didn't need that much. We didn't need that much tax, you can have it back, or is that, is that a thing, no?
You wanna make it a thing?
To get back to, to get back to the residents.
Yeah, and in other words, in other words.
But nobody does that, but. That's a difficult position that you're in, because then you can't give that money back until next year, you've already raised their taxes.
Yeah.
So so that's a tough spot.
You know.
You you increase subsequent years appropriated fund balance, you wanna give it back.
What?
You just increased the subsequent years appropriated fund balance, if you wanna give it back.
So our fund balance, basically, would be six hundred thousand dollars to to inject into the budget.
Yeah, yeah.
If you collect too much money. No, sorry, if you collect too much money, you can, next year, you can put in nine hundred thousand dollars, that lowers.
Yeah.
Property taxes by using surplus that you collected last year. Other than the person moving, they're typically gonna get that benefit.
Because the logistics of trying to calculate.
Yeah.
What the amount to go back would cost the village a tremendous, it's it's a, it's a tremendous financial exercise. So let's say it costs twenty thousand dollars to to, you know, do the math, and then you have to. Pay someone or write the checks and send the checks, there's a cost of returning the money.
Right.
That, um I mean, have you ever bought anything, they sent you the wrong thing, I'm like, oh, don't even bother returning it, it's more work for us, so it'd be better to. Offset, offset going forward, and.
So what we do is, this is my seventeenth budget, right? We all have. Uh double-digit in budget experience, all of us do. What happens is, we try to get as close of a number as possible, because we don't want that, but um. But we're conservative, we're wanting to be competitive adding to the fund balance. We add different levels to the fund balance every year.
If 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 we were, if we're right, sitting, as we're sitting here now, if we're expecting the sales tax revenues to come in higher than we're projecting. Can, could we just reduce that from the property tax end? That amount, and 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 make that, make that sixty two percent number a little lower.
That's already factored in to the per portion of that budget. When we talk about the sales tax, but you know, for three consecutive years. We are exceeding our estimate by nearly a million dollars.
So we have done that already.
Yeah, and and to a certain extent, you know, the the first year was the, you know, the COVID year, and we really didn't know what was gonna happen. Uh the second year was kind of that first full year of the new county sales factory. Which went into effect, I believe, in. First or second quarter.
Twenty twenty-one, yeah.
So it's been, it was taking us a couple of years to really identify what the trend is, and. I mean, like I said, if you saw that, you know, we were making. Yeah, on an annual basis, exceeding that revenue by a million dollars, and not factoring that into the budget, I think that. That could open up the, you know, the board and the all of us to a little bit of criticism for, you know, what could be seen as. You know, artificially keeping that number low.
And it's, but it's a better option to, you know, be a little low on revenues than to be. Um too high on revenues, because. You know, if we ha- if we're not collecting enough property taxes, then. And we have to make up for it, we just have to pull out of the reserve fund. And we don't wanna be pulling, you know, we have a reserve fund policy of of thirty percent of what our budget is, so that we, in case of an emergency, we have. Operating, but we have a lot of big expenses with Village Hall and capital expenses, so. We need to have a healthy reserve fund, so that Ogie can pay for projects until he bonds them.
Our reserve fund is basically. Taxes that we didn't need for that current year of community, right? I'm happy that we have one, it's very healthy, it's been um a combination of smart budgeting, as well as oversight of everyone's budget. And a little, you know, you better watch your budget kind of fear thing remains, but the reality is. Everything in the surplus, which gives us a better and healthier outlook as as a community, as a village. You can look at it, it was a tax increase that didn't need to happen, so. That's our, that's our. Dilemma, balance, that we try to achieve all the time.
So what what I'm hearing is, at the end of this exercise here. Barring um uh economic Armageddon, whi- which some people are predicting, uh the the um. That we expect to add to this fund balance at the end of the year again. Yeah, yeah, so we're already, in a way, we're already collecting too much, no, we are.
Yeah, and and you mentioned that sixty-two percent number.
Yeah.
One of the, one of the revenues in this budget is a transfer from the sewer fund to back to the general fund. So if that uh remain entirely within the sewer fund. That, I think it's eight hundred fifty-two thousand.
Yeah.
Would radically change what that percentage is, so it may not be sixty-six percent. But it would probably be closer to that, you know, sixty-four percent. But so, i- i- there are things that we've done to to that that impact what that ratio was.
But even at the end of the day, even if we're collecting more, we have so many projects that are coming down the line, it's, it's needed. It's needed, like it's, like, can't.
And and if you do, if you do a project, say for five million, and you need to bond five million, but you have an extra million in the surplus that you wanna. So you bond four million, that four million, you're saving, you're saving a significant amount of money for a long period of time. That's, that's the, that's the balance that we, that's what, that's what we get.
I I I just wanted to signal to to people, especially property owners, cuz I remember, remember what it was like. To pay those, the the those taxes, right, and 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 it's.
Over there?
Yeah, and 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 it's, you know, you 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 to just let them know that we're, we're, we're working on it, they don't have to go up. And I think they could go down at some point.
I think at some point, but right now, because of where are, where we at in the village, and all the projects that we're, they're coming in down the pipeline. And maybe, and and even when we saw how many fire trucks, or the police, all these um things that need to be replaced. We have to come from that.
Double projects, double projects are not fun to do, it takes a lot of time, there's always the risk of something going wrong, they're real pain in the. You can't not do it, you have to do it, just say to to, indeed, to have a stable community.
Now, the 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 other question I have is, we talked um uh Monday night about putting um. Meters uh uh on Upper American Avenue, that costs money. But that pays for itself over the course, as I said, two years.
Yeah.
Right, is there a category of uh of 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 expenditure or budget that? Yeah, this looks on paper, this looks bad, but this is gonna pay for itself, uh this is, this is self-funding.
Oh, yeah.
What do you, what?
One of the items that we would probably look at to pay for the parking meters is the parking reserve fund, there are those money. We have in there currently, but we've used that uh several times in the past years to uh to purchase.
Tell them how it gets funded.
Yeah, so the parking reserve fund is funded through. When you have commercial developments, and they are unable to create adequate off-street parking. Um they are required to make a payment to the village of into what's known as a parking reserve fund. For the creation of public park.
I don't think that that gets to what Lou was asking.
I mean, I'm 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 looking for a category, I mean, I'm thinking about, I'm thinking ahead. To my, to my damn uh solar panels.
I I re- I mean, I have an idea, but.
You 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 know, so so, yeah, let's say if we ever did that, it's gonna cost a ton of money, but it's, it's eventually gonna pay for itself. Right, 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 so so um is there, is there?
It is gonna pay.
Yeah.
So those kind of improvements, um we look for those things all the time, we look for those things.
But what do you call, i- is there a place to put them in the budget, we we call up that, this is, this is a self-funding expenditure?
No, it's it's basically a calculation when you decide, when the board decides or agrees to fund that project.
It's like the new lights that just went in, that took a long time to get to the point where it got funded. But one of the reasons it got funded was because the other lights were so expensive to undertake, so we're we're spending this money.
You're right. It was expensive, and then we were calling in overtime to turn the lights on and off.
Right.
In in this stage, that's insane, right? So so that's, and it's not like they're gonna lose the overtime, we'll use the overtime to do other things throughout the community, but. Right, that's, that's exa- that's a perfect example, perfect example, it took a while to get that done.
Because we had a lot of other capital projects, I mean, they had, and.
Yeah, and creating a performance is pretty simple, we would just say what the cost is, we would amortize it. Over the course of five or ten years, you you demonstrate what the amortized uh cost is. You demonstrate what the anticipated revenue is, and you would find out, you know, pretty quickly. What the uh the buyback, how long the buyback would be, or how would be to improve our cost, and what the ongoing.
So what, what I, what I would love would be, like, when the, when the total numbers are in, like. It's this much, but this much of it is on a, is on a self-funding schedule. Yeah, so we can, so you're saying we can predict, we can predict us, for example. Like, we can, like, right now, for the, like, the example of the lights, like, we know, let's say it costs fifty fifty thousand. Do, is there a way for you to tell us, like, over X amount of years, like, this, it's gonna save us which dollar? Yeah, but but that's, that's, that's saving money, that's not drinking money.
That put it over the hump, the fir- in fact, the first time it got presented to us, that wasn't there. And then, when we realized how much money it would save, that's how, that's how we got, that's how we got that approval.
Uh but but i- in all, uh in all fairness, I mean, that is simply. Uh but but i- in all, uh in all fairness, I mean, that is simply saying we will be spending less. I mean, the these items I'm talking about, the parking meters and the solar panels, they will eventually make us money.
You want your third option?
But.
I don't make us, I mean, that's gonna be a lot of money, a multi-sport, if we got it in multi-sport.
That's my big thing. So that, that, in other words.
New machine.
Yeah, like, that, that'll sound a lot of, but five years from now, that could be making, adding millions to the budget.
That kind of money forward.
Yeah, that's there, that's the challenge.
Just to have the now, the capacity to, to fund it, the capacity to.
Right.
Uh to build it, and the capacity to operate it. And, you know. Jerry's right, this, the village has been focused on, you know, on the order, the consent order from the DEC for the INI.
Yeah.
Once that's, once all those sewers are completed, there'll be less sewer work, although hopefully we'll be maintaining better than happened eighty years ago. And.
Because it'll be reconditioned.
Right.
It's good about it.
But then, but then that opens up the capacity for staff to do other projects, but it's just, you know, it's like, it's like being in 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 school. And, you know, when you take that fifth course or that sixth course, you don't necessarily have the capacity to get all of the work done.
No, yeah, you start sleeping less.
And. And we're not, I mean, the thing about it, government is like, it's not, we're not a money-making organization, so we ha- you know, you have to balance, like. Okay, we have to, now we know how much our camp costs, we didn't know for a while, um you know, does the camp, if we operate the camp.
Mm hmm.
You know, at a, do we have to make money on the camp? No. Is it good to break even on the camp? Yeah, but we need to provide a camp, so. You know, governments provide services, and I think we have to be mindful of the fact that it's not always, you know, we're not here. To, as a profit center.
Well, but but.
Really push us, we get detailed information.
I would just, I would just like to get us to, yeah, I'd just like to get us to a place where, where uh we are leaning on property owners. Less and less, uh that 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 they're not our only, they're not our.
Our main.
Our 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 primary source of 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 uh income. I, that sixty-two percent figure. Is a nice, from my point of view, is a nice start.
Maybe budgets, no one has every complaint that. Bringing in more non-tax revenue.
Yeah.
That 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 put me off a little bit, but I understand that there could be concerns about some economics. Issues coming down the line, but.
And.
We live in Westchester, it's very different here than it is the rest of the country.
But, I, and I think not, not in the next year and a half, but, you know, we are, Westchester is one of the very few counties that shares sales tax.
Yep.
And it doesn't, not every, that with the county's not required to share it, a different administration might not share it. So, you know, we, the George pushed for a higher, a much, a higher tax increase, and then shared it with us. But it's possible that a subsequent administration would not share that, and so we have to know, you know, if we're relying on that. For, I mean, it's great, but if we're relying on it, maybe we also need to, you know, manage that in some way. For the rainy day that it doesn't come in.
So so we have a, we have a rainy big pond that get that water, right? But we also, year by year, and we breathe year by year, right? So we we have this year, then this on next year, we'll think about next year.
Mm hmm.
Although we have a long-term capital plan, uh and and we know what we need and we know um. In basic terms, what we wanna do, our operating budget is a twelve-month budget. And if all of a sudden, there's a change in administration, because we're losing, we're losing George to term limits, and someone comes in and he's a maniac. We're, we're gonna have to really make some changes, but we have that time to make those changes and to be able to readjust where we're going.
Which brings me to the thing, and I'm, I meant to ask them when they were here. Um uh if 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 the worst were to happen, uh and we need to go to Plan B, and we come back to you. Point to the spot in the budget where you, where you would start cutting. All right, uh and and I think, and I think we wanna get that from every uh, every department head, uh, not that it's gonna happen. But I mean, I, in my head, I know, you know, I have a, an image of a, of a, of a plank, and I know there's something out at the rear end, and that's the first thing I'm gonna push over.
It's similar to what we asked with the capital budget, it's like, what is the most important, and this is similar, but it's on the opposite end, it's.
What's the opposite, and what's, what's, what's the thing, what's the thing where you'd say, well, I'd come in and let's, 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 let's start cutting here? Um I I I'd like to know where that spot is, where the the B spot, the Plan B spot is in each, each section here. If if we have to come back and and ask for cuts.
Because we don't know what made.
So we're required, right, to the first look at the three words. Safety, health, and welfare, those are the three primaries that we have to look at initially. From there, it gets to be. Events. Items that we don't necessarily, you know, have to do, but basically, we've been through that exercise with COVID. We really did have to cut two and a half million dollars out of the COVID budget. We, we got, we had the first case two towns away, three towns away, we had the first case. What that did was, it helped us as villages, because we were preparing or working on our budget. In March or February, January, and we're getting it ready for March. And then, within ten days, I had to give you a new budget.
Mm hmm.
I had to give you a new budget, because I'm gonna get hit with COVID, I don't know, I've never been through this. I did create a COVID emergency or pandemic emergency response plan, which I shared with everyone, this, I did that in two thousand fifteen. I pulled that plan out, and to try to help staff and to try to help what we were doing. But the reality is, I'm the budget officer, I had to give, I had to give Nora, Tom, and the others, I had to give them a budget.
And and we.
Caught it to shreds.
And we had, you know, residents who were all getting, you know, they were, they'd all had a ten percent salary reduction, and that was a common, you know. A lot of people had their salaries reduced.
That's the other part.
In the twenty twenty.
If if there's an economic Armageddon, we can't treat the property tax like that's not effective, those people are all gonna be bleeding from the air, so.
We had that, we had that, we had, went through that exercise a couple of years, we had that time when. Growth shit began, right?
Hmm.
And.
And we also had to figure out, we had higher quidding expenses, remember, that, and we had.
We had to buy sprays, we had to buy, we had to buy. We had to buy all sorts of sanitizer stuff.
And we were giving P E to people who couldn't get it, we were getting it, you know, just beginning. And we also, and we got all that floral, yeah, smelling hat.
That awful state hint.
Oh, that was quite the.
Formal cream.
But we, we had to become, instead of a village that is focused on infrastructure and operations and all, we had to become like a little bit of a.
Emergency, yeah. And we also had to set up people for working remotely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we've been through this.
Kind of.
Through it. And we'll go through it again. Nobody does.
But but the reality is, we can make adjustments as we make it.
I I just don't want people to think that we're spending like, like drunken sailors. Uh what I wanna do with this project is I wanna stabilize this government for long haul, and um and and and, you know. And add where we need to add and.
Were able to stabilize it when I got here, we've been able to make things, it really is up to the people. Or the credit goes to people who have been here longer than I.
Now, since the judges brought it up about the salary increase. That's that that, that's probably something down the road that we wanna, we wanna talk about too.
So what I, what else, what our budget does have.
What'd you say?
I didn't say much.
So we have a, we have a couple of dozen non-percentage employees, most of them all, but a good, a good amount of support, but they, they're all over. So our budget doesn't have their increase, we have to talk about their.
Yep.
But the PVA and the CSE, right?
I think so. But one, one thing about the elected officials, um if you increase your salary. It does not go in effect until the beginning of the next term.
Oh, okay.
So you you can adopt the salary of X, but that wouldn't go in effect until, like, the first Monday, December.
Wha- what they were asking for would have gone.
A real rule, the game's rule. No, that's, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
You really wanted us to like, be like, damn.
So 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 if we, if we gave them uh what they asked for, which, which I think is probably not enough, um uh uh. It 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 starts next year anyway.
Force, I think, I think four years test.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
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 But even for them, that's the same, well, because they're elected officials.
Mm hmm.
They, they're uh sat there, their salary won't go affect until the next.
Okay, alright.
Next organizational year of the year.
It's not the term, it's the um, the the organization, I mean, September first.
Alright.
Um their salary is substantially lower than a lot of the, like, the town of Rye judges.
What what is the town of of Merrick? What, what do they get?
We, we can do, we can.
Yeah, yeah. Jamie told me, with this, this request about the, the worry about the um. Having the towns take over, you know, just, just uh with with Portchester, she said that. Her, her judges told her that if, if they had to do ours, our court work, they would all resign.
Well, you know, I mean.
See you later.
I live. I live in Rhine.
New jobs for the ones who are for our guys.
Augie and I both live in Rhine, and so, so the town of Rock, so our, the town we live in took over the Portchester Court.
Yeah, that's right.
And our taxes, it's, it was, I mean, our, our Rye Town taxes are low, because Rye Town doesn't manage, you know, manages beaches and some parks. But the court really up, the court was a substantial percentage-wise increase in the budget, it's been. So, so this, so this report that got printed today, the, the, the abbreviated, not the abbreviated version, yeah, but. So, so we should keep this, are you gonna?
The one to ten, page one to.
The page one to ten, which is the expen- the, the.
What's up there?
The revenues.
This, the, it should be working off of this, but when you.
As opposed to the book, that's what I'm saying, okay, work over this, okay. Yes, yes.
And that's really taken right out of.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, because sometimes they don't always, sometimes we get the printouts, there's some different. Okay, okay.
So this, this is just all the four pages out.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, I mean the four pages, I meant the expenses, nothing changed, that's exactly, okay.
Yeah, and then we, and the other budget, the all the revenue, the current year revenue taxes for at one point, fourth sixth. I think what was printed today was at the March one, I don't, there might be a slight difference in the uh current, or the adopted and. Uh with our colleagues, it doesn't affect you.
Okay, actually, actually, okay.
But ultimately, at the end of the day, we, we give the board an additional copy, in case you forget your book.
Sure.
Yeah.
So you know what we're, we're doing.
Have I ever forgotten?
Yeah, thank you.
Every day. Thank you, thank you.
Well, overall, it's, it feels pretty good.
Overall. But time will tell when we go through all.
Here, um they will talk to you about what they do and what they've asked for and what revenues they projected. I love the process.
And.
Wasn't like this in the other communities that I work.
And to the extent we have questions for specific department heads, it might be beneficial to let you or them know ahead of time, you don't have to.
Good, send them the questions, they're, they're gonna, when they see you, they're gonna answer those questions.
Yeah, 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 that, yeah, yeah, just, but just so that they, I don't wanna ask, you know, it might be a question for anybody to think about, so.
That's the meaning, it's time to go home.
It means it's sort of seven o'clock.
It's time to go home.
Damn it.
You gonna close the meeting?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. I need a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
But you know what happens if you don't close the meeting, everybody walks away? Meeting's closed.
There needs to be a little pad up there.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be wood.
Yeah. A wooden thing.
It was really open to me.
Yeah, I wanna know who left this here.
Recreation is my day.
No record, no building department, it's Monday.
I, I will, yes. I had the sticky note, I got it all year, I, you know. I put my question.
You know, I'll bet that is.